Good evening. The June 11th, 2019 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system, or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which board customarily takes action, you must first complete a PEAT form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Beth MacCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Jonathan Grantham, Deputy Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings.
Good evening, everybody. Before we continue with our meeting, the board met several weeks ago in Orlando for master board training. All the board members, including Dr. Mayor, our superintendent, and it was a meeting to help us to better, be worked better as a board and to be able to communicate better. And we, in that meeting, came up with a school board mission statement, and we're going to recite the school board mission statement at every meeting from this point out. So tonight, we are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered, because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success for Marion County.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of TV and Media Production, Public Relations, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, Deputy Superintendent Grantham, Mrs. Elena Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs. I have a special treat for you tonight. Our inspiration is going to be in the form of students who are committed to the cause, and their cause was school. They attended 2,340 days of school out of 2,340 days of school, give or take a couple for hurricane days. So their attendance rate is 100%. So I'm sure that there were mornings when they didn't feel well, and other students would have stayed home, and perhaps they should have stayed home, but they didn't. They persevered, and they went to school, and they were counted absent. They did the work. They made the grade, and they just graduated this year, just a few weeks ago. So it's a little ironic that I believe only one of the four is here tonight, but they've graduated, so their obligation is over.
That's funny.
But let me tell you about the first three who are not here, and then I'll introduce you to a student who is here. Amber Hannigan enrolled as a kindergarten student in 2006 at Reddick-Collar Elementary, and then advanced to North Marion Middle and North Marion High Schools. She plans to study business administration at Santa Fe College, and she's the daughter of Christina Hannigan of Reddick. And I always make it a point to share where the students went to school, because not only did their high school teachers inspire them, but obviously elementary and middle school did as well, and parents deserve the recognition too for supporting their kids. So the second student is Wasanti Sharma. She started kindergarten in 2006 at Madison Street, and then advanced to Howard Middle and Forest High School. She plans to attend the University of Florida with an undeclared major at this time, and she is the daughter of Prim and Tommy Sharma of Ocala. Jalen Tomlin, I don't think Jalen's here. You are? Come up here. Come up here. Well, my goodness. Okay. We're gonna stop. I was out in the lobby, and I was like, oh my gosh, where are these students at? Okay, so Amber, come on up. This is Amber.
Mr. Christian.
Wasanti. Here. Here's what we're gonna do.
They have perfect attendance.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish reading about them, and then I'll ask them to introduce themselves, and if they want to say anything, they can. I've told them they don't have to, but I am so thrilled that y'all are here now. So Amber, raise your hand.
That's me.
Okay, so Amber is the one who started at Reddick-Collar to North Marion Middle and then to North Marion High School. Wasanti, okay? She started at Madison Street, then Howard Middle and Forest High School. Jalen? Jalen entered kindergarten at Maplewood Elementary in 2006, then moved to Shady Hill Elementary, Liberty Middle, and Forest High School. She plans to study still agriculture, okay, while attending the University of Florida, and Jalen is the daughter of Lachandra Williams of Ocala. And then finally, we have Ms. Hannah Pharo. By process of elimination. Hannah started kindergarten in 2006 at Maplewood Elementary and continued to Howard Middle and Forest High School, and she plans to continue her education by earning an associate degree at the College of Central Florida, and her parents are Wayne and Kim Pharo, both of whom work for the school system, as do some of the other parents, I believe. So for you graduates of the class of 2019, how does it feel to be out of school?
I'm not gonna lie, I miss it.
You miss it. It's okay. I want to present these to each of you. These are signed certificates of recognition, each signed by all of our five board members and by our superintendent, who could not be with us tonight. Ms. Pharo, that's for you. And Ms. Hannigan. And for Ms. Sharma. And for Jalen. Now, last year, we only had one student up here who accomplished this, so I try to make it a point every year to query the attendance records, because I believe these are the kind of people that employers want, who will show up, who are dedicated, who want to be on the job, and want to do a good job, and represent themselves well and their families well. So this is your inspiration for this evening. If any of you would like to share comments with them, I think now would be the appropriate time.
Should we say the pledge first?
Let's do this, and then I'll have them lead, and then they can go down.
Okay. All right. Ms. Stacy?
I will say to you, those that are here run the world. Those that are missing, they're missing in action. You have a great future. You will be our future, and thank you. Keep us, keep our social security going. Keep it going.
Oh, dear. Congratulations. That is really quite a feat. I just cannot imagine not missing one day of school. You must be really healthy. Yes, yes, you must be. It's just amazing, but congratulations, and Ms. Stacy's right, you, you will make, and Mr. Christian, right, you will be what our employers want to hire because of your already proven work ethic. So congratulations.
Absolutely, and 99% of life is showing up, and, and you're doing that. And the other part that's just so wonderful to have you standing here in front of us is the fact that you are showing that it can be done, no excuses, and if possible, if you have to do it every day, make it fun, you know? And get everything out of it that you can. So thank you for being that bright light.
And I did owe everything, and everybody has said, you guys had to be focused and had to have a destination and a goal to do that. In all the years that I've gone to school, all the years that I've gone to school, only one year was I able to do perfect attendance, and that was an extremely hard year, and you guys were able to do it from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. So I applaud you for that, and I applaud you for not just stopping at high school, but deciding to go further and do some other things in life. So keep doing what you're doing, and I agree with Beth and Mr. Christian. Employees, employers want people that come to work, because they need to have people on the job and not at home. So congratulations, guys.
Yes, congratulations, and I, congratulations, and I wish you guys the most success in all your future endeavors, and come back and visit and tell us what you're doing next. Hopefully, it is in Marion County. We need good, solid workers like y'all. Thank you.
Any of them plan on being teachers?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
You know what? They were looking at us like we're crazy right then. I don't know.
I mean, you like school so well, you might as well.
Yeah.
On the other side of the desk.
Thank you.
If you will all stand, I will ask them to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Grantham.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 11th, 2019 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the deputy superintendent's recommendation?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 2nd, 2019 administrative briefing and work session?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Ms. Throer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's a pose-like sign? You like?
Aye.
Oh, okay. All right, and the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 9th, 2019 school board meeting?
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 16th, 2019 Evaluation Committee Meeting?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. Throer.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Ms. Suzanne McGuire, Coordinator of Family School and Community Engagement, we'd like to recognize the following individuals for their commitment to our students and schools as the 2018-2019 outstanding volunteers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Grantham, and guests in the audience. It's always exciting when we get to talk about some of our fabulous and wonderful volunteers that spend time with our students at the school. So what I'm gonna do this evening is I'm going to have the volunteer come up with the principal and just tell you a little bit about the topic that they won in. There was a committee that judged some great nominations, and these five individuals just rose to the top. So if Leann Sonnberger from Denellin Elementary School would come up, and Leann is being recognized as our youth school-wide volunteer, she's been volunteering at Denellin Elementary School for two years, and she goes in the morning, and if you know, we have a little walking path between the elementary and the high school, which is perfect, so it's a great example. So Leann, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do. And you can.
Congratulations.
Thank you. If you just stand up there. The next volunteer is Ms. Kara Crawford, and that is from Emerald Shores nomination. Kara is being recognized as the adult school-wide volunteer for her five years of, of service. And they're fighting over who gets to present this to her. I will tell you, in all the years that we've done this, I've never had a nomination that was probably about an inch thick with recommendations from so many different people at the school for her.
I'm sorry, but I have to speak a little bit. This woman deserves a paycheck. She probably has worked over 900 hours in this year alone, but has worked for five years for Emerald Shores total. And I am sad to say that if an extra unit comes about, I will take it, because both of her children have moved on to the middle school now, and I'm gonna have to beg and plead to keep her, but she's done an amazing job in our media center with our media specialist, Ms. Green, and she also has been our PTO chair for the past two years and just does an amazing job finding ways to just support our children and make school even more fun through PTO. So we thank you so much for all that you do.
Now, you know, when you've visited, Stanton Weersdale is a great little neighborhood school that has so many volunteers, and if you would join me, please, at the podium. They actually, this year, have three winners in our different categories. So Nadine Meserschmidt is being recognized as the senior classroom volunteer for her two years of service there, and it's specifically in pre-K and VE self-contained classes, and she's out of state.
She is out of state, unfortunately.
She's out of state, okay, so thank you, but we think that's wonderful with the, the classrooms that she volunteers in. Our next volunteer, also from Stanton Weersdale, is Christine Gillis, who is being recognized as our senior school-wide volunteer. And Stanton Weersdale has some really unique things. One of them is their care closet, and she's been volunteering and coordinating that for at least this last past year that I know of. So I'll let you present them. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Let me go over here. And then, Board Members, you remember, we have the Duda Award, the dude, Mr. Henry Duda, who volunteered for so many years in the school system. So the committee really looks at the nominations and see what, who speaks to the spirit of Mr. Duda. So this year, the Duda winner is Howard Winkler, again, from Stanton Weersdale, and Mr. Winkler has over 13 years of service, and I hear specializes in math and science in the fifth grade. Am I right? Yes, so.
There you go.
Thank you so much. And Board Members, and Dr. Grantham, at the time of the nominations, which was in early April, when their forms were submitted, the volunteers in front of you had 1,653 hours and change, and according to the Independent Sector's new dollar amount for volunteers of 2543, as of April, they gave an estimated value of over $42,000 worth of volunteer time. So these are just five or four of our outstanding volunteers, and we thank all our volunteers for their time and their talent that they share with our students.
Now, we'll tell you what we tell the little kids, just turn around.
Ms. McCall.
I, I want to tell you, when I, when I speak to groups about volunteerism, the first thing I say to them is, think about where our world would be if we did not have volunteers. And I think about where would our school system be if we did not have all you fabulous volunteers? So thank you so much for committing to our kids and for giving back to our communities. So thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
So many of the students in the school, some, some children don't have moms, some children don't have dads in homes, and, and some people have grandmas, or they don't have grandmas, and they will remember you as big sister, extra mom, maybe a granddad, somebody that's kind of close to them that they'll always remember that did things for them and didn't get paid for it. You know, that means a lot to children, especially children that are not as, I remember one time I was talking to a child, and they said, well, just talking about somebody doing something for them, and they said, well, they get paid for it, and I said, no, they don't get paid for it. And it made all the difference in the world to that child to know, because they're used, they were in foster care, and then people had always gotten paid for taking care of them, and I said, no, this person does not get paid for this. They do it because they care about your success. And it just, tears just came in the child's eyes, because they couldn't imagine someone doing something for them that they didn't get paid for. So thank you for all you do.
Absolutely, absolutely. They're not a check to you, you know, and you, what you're giving to them, that, that support is just irreplaceable and priceless, really. So thank you so much for being of service, and as you walk away from us, truly, I want to shake your hand. It would be an honor and a pleasure, I think, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your selfless service. The things that you are providing to our kids, to others, you're an example to others that, and we pray that we get more volunteers of your caliber that will step up and say, hey, we see a need, and you met the need, you're meeting the needs, so we thank you for that, truly.
Leann, were you before us last year? Do I recall you? Okay, I must have you confused with another student, but I do want to thank every one of you for making a difference to our students. We all know, in this day and time, sometimes it's hard for the teachers and parents and everyone to reach every student, but when we have volunteers that come into our schools and into the classrooms to be specifically meeting a need of a student, or maybe even teachers, or whatever it may be, you guys are definitely the ones that are helping make a difference, and we are so appreciative, so thank you. Thank you. Okay. You guys can leave now.
I meant it about.
I know, now that you're stuck there.
Me too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Don't cry, don't cry.
Just rest it, eat your Wheaties. Get ready for next year.
I will now, yes, I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the board tonight.
We have none.
We have nine. Okay, well, then we will move forward.
We'll move forward.
Give me one second.
Give me a minute.
Here we go. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-7.1-C2-0.3?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. Throer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-7.1-C2-0.3?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. Throer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the renewal of the sublease with the District Board of Trustees of College of Central Florida for the airport driving pad?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Ms. Throer. Do we have any discussion? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $10,237.92. $1,000 to Bellevue High School from Marion Soil and Water Conservation District. $1,000 to Forest High School from First Materials, Supplies, and Therapy Equipment valued at $6,237.92 to Hillcrest Public Schools from 4H Extension. $2,000 to Marion Technical Institute from GFWC Greater Women's Club.
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Throer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Ms. Stacy, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. You know, it's so nice that we have the volunteers that do things for our students that don't get paid, and we have the people that give of their money, because it's not something that anybody requires of them, it's not a tax, it's not something that's required of them, it's something they do, just as the volunteers do for the children, the, those who give money to our school system are of the same vein, of the same character, and the same type of people. And I'd like to thank those in the community that, that are of that type of character, because those are the people that we all will remember in this community as we come and go through this community, they're the people that stand out, and I'd like to thank them from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular administrative briefing at work session is scheduled for June 20th, 2019, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss school planning update, 2020 health insurance, Westport High School power hour, Silver River Museum expansion update. The following regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for July 18th, 2019, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss technology plan update, tentative instructional materials, bid list, school planning updates, five-year work plan draft, strategic plan, 2020 health insurance, and school start and stop times. And with that, we will begin with our committee reports, concerns, and comments. And Dr. Grantham, do you have anything this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Elena?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Gibbs?
Just real quick, today's the cutoff for the ICROC application, so if you could please get your nominations into me as soon as possible, so we, I can get the draft finalized before the next board meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Oh.
We'll begin with you tonight.
Again, good evening, everybody. I pray so far that we're off to a good summer. There's so many things going on, so many activities, and we're just praying that all the kids are having a good summer. Listen, I don't have much to say, because it's been a good, very good meeting, and I'm just thankful for all the volunteers that we do have. We just acknowledge just a few of the ones, but there are many, many more for the school district, and we want to thank them as well for their service. So pray that everybody have a great, great summer so far.
Thank you. Ms. Throer?
Yes. Good evening again, everyone, and yes, I'm feeling positive, it's usually typical, but I think it just starts with the mission statement that you read, Mr. Cummings, at the beginning of the meeting. I think it signifies who we're becoming as a board and, and everything that we're trying to accomplish, so that's a great way to start off every meeting, which sounds like that's what we're going to do. So that's, that's great. I do have a couple things on my mind. One of them is, is that it wa, we talked about this at our last workshop, and about going into the planning stages of relocating our school board meetings to a larger venue, and this is something that has been really close, I think, to all of our, our hearts. It's, it's making it happen that becomes the challenge. But if we're serious about community involvement, which I know that we are, it's, it's very important to just reduce any, any barriers that we may have to that. So, community, please stay tuned, and when the time comes, that we have a larger and hopefully more inviting venue, we'll expect to see you. So there's the challenge. The other thing I have on my mind, and I guess I'll cue Kevin on this one if he's here, he was gonna put up a little graphic for our career and technical education industry certifications, and since I don't see him sitting here right now, I'll just go ahead and explain it. This is really a feather in the district's cap. It is something that we should be so proud of, and I know we are proud of, to have over, and help me with this, Mr. Vianella, over 1,700 industry certifications?
Over 1,900.
Over 1,900, okay, 1,700 was last year. That's so last year. So it is absolutely incredible that, that students that are traditionally not college-bound are getting programming that, that meets their needs, and goes beyond meeting their needs, actually. And what a great pipeline into the community, and hopefully for them to stay in Marion County and, and continue to help Marion County grow and become a more dynamic place to live. So I just felt like it would be great if we had had the visual depiction on there, because that is a trend, people, that we want to see continue, and it's just wonderful. The next thing I had on my mind was, I was thinking about Reddick Elementary School, and they increased 12 points in their English Language Arts, what most of us would just say, reading, their grade reading scores. So I gave the principal a call, just to pick her brain a little bit as to how, why she felt they were able to make that kind of progress in such a short amount of time. And coming from the classroom myself, I knew she was gonna say things like setting the tone, you know, creating the culture, making sure the kids understand. The response is never, oh, because we're an F school, what do you expect? Oh, no, no, no. That was squelched immediately, and it became all about coming together, building that culture to, to get better. But there was a couple things that, that stood out, and, and one of them was, she shared that the, our new CKLA curriculum is, is great as far as the skills portion goes for our K2s, and then the knowledge portion for our fourth, fifth, fourth and fifth graders that are hopefully already reading well, just has provided a tremendous amount of, of extension. extension knowledge. But where the gap continues to be, and, and she personally said herself, we just haven't gotten good enough with the curriculum yet, which I thought was so honest of an administrator to say when you're starting something new. It does take time to train your teachers and come up the curve. But, but there, she still was expressing concern about those, the, the kids that are really struggling with their reading still in third grade. And we talked about this at a recent work session, and you brought that up, Ms. Stacy, that does it really make sense to wait until third grade to retain kids? Obviously, we want to get to a point where no one has to be retained because they're on grade level. You know, that is the ideal. But until then, you know, what are we going to do to fill these gaps? And, and this principal shared that they're doing a variety of things. She, she mentioned the iReady toolboxes. She mentioned scheduling to make sure that, that those minutes are used wisely every day. Talking about things, decoding phonics, Fry words, teachers really owning the data so that the teachers become excited to say, hey, just in the past week, they know exactly where their kids are. So, I guess my point is, is that it's, there's two things that stood out to me from the conversation. One, that it's not a magic bullet to teach kids to read. It is an overall comprehensive, stable programming where everyone is on the same page and working towards the same goal and are totally invested. So, that was, that was one. And then the second thing was thinking about, and this is something we'll have a conversation with the superintendent and, and you, what is there out there that, that everyone can buy into, that, that's easy, that will help us address the needs of these kids that are coming in so far behind and not having the success that we want them to have. So, those were my two takeaways. I thought it was a great, a great conversation and I was glad to hear that a lot of things are coming together for our much younger kids and that we can therefore be very hopeful for scores going forward. So, that was the reading thing. And then my second to last thing, and this is kind of humorous, because we had, it was a very interesting work session and we had conversation about our medical insurance and how much it's, it may possibly go up. And that's hard on, on everyone. And what is it that's causing our rates to increase? And something that was shared to us by Ms. Lively and company was that, and I think all of us sitting here either know someone who has been affected by breast cancer or has actually lost a loved one through breast cancer. And that seems to be something that, for whatever reasons, there's probably a lot of them, that our women are not getting out and getting the free exams like, like they could be. And so, then that becomes maybe a marketing issue and, and just bringing awareness to how important the early detection is. And then I made a little joke about, well, maybe we need something like the Blood Mobile, something like the Wellness Bus, something like a Mammo Van. And we chuckled about that. And I thought, you know what? I'm gonna look into this a little bit. As it turns out, Manatee, Hillsborough, Pasco, Pinellas and Sarasota School Boards are doing Mammo Vans.
Good.
So, I feel like if they can do it and we've identified a need, then certainly it's worth looking into. So, I would like to ask, you know, to quote a very bad pun, that we think outside the breast, and, and look into this. Because the Wellness Buses are already doing prostate exams for men. So, it would seem to me that we need to be doing the same for women. So, that's my take on the mammogram conversation. And then the last thing is, and this was a consent agenda item, I was very gratified to see the school psychologist intern new job description get passed because we have been losing interns that all they need to do is an internship. We have been losing interns that could, we could then be hiring to other counties because they were already paying them at higher than, I think, we're coming in, but at least it's gonna be competitive, getting substitute salary. It's just for one year with no promise of a job going forward. But it's written into their job description to have direct contact with students. And these are our young people that can be mentors and really be helpful at the school level. And I think our schools are always crying for that. And also in the revised school psychologist and social worker, again, it's written in to be having direct contact with students, building relationships and weaving those webs of support that we know so many kids need these days. And, and to me, this is where the rubber meets the road, you know? If, if we can help these kids before they become desperate, then we'll be in much better shape. So, those were my, those were my things tonight and I'm excited with how we're moving forward and I look forward to the next meeting.
Ms. Stacy?
You know, I wasn't gonna say anything tonight. But, and listening to Mrs. Thrower, um, I have to say something to this community. I've been around this boardroom for many years, more years on the other side of that podium than behind this one. Many, many times, many, many hours. And all through the years, and I've worked with other activists in other communities, and when people would run for school board, I didn't like to see teachers on the school board because I felt like they were, um, oh, they had big hearts. They just wanted to give everything away. They're just too kind to be on the school board to make some of these business decisions that needed to be made. I want to say to this community, we have, you have, two tough cookies that came from the classroom, serving on this school board, Kelly King and Nancy Thrower. You are my hero teachers for school board members. Thank you. You do a great job, both of you.
That was a teacher, too.
That's long time ago. That's too long ago. She don't get credit for it.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
We're all teachers of hers.
I want to remind the community, when we have short school board meetings and you're going, what did they do? That we have these very intense, lengthy work sessions where we cover so much ground and get so much done.
And their lunch.
And then it gets into the consent agenda. So, so we don't pass the consent agenda lightly. We are very careful about reading through it prior to our board meetings. And most of the stuff that is in it, well, all of the stuff that is in there, we've had the privilege of, of looking at much, a long time before the board meetings. And most of it has been discussed in work sessions. So, I don't think the community always understands that when they see us up here and we pass a consent agenda, exactly what that means. So, I want them to know that, that we are doing our due diligence and we are looking at, at everything. Also, I had the distinct pleasure of serving on a panel and speaking about leadership to the emerging leaders of the Florida Music Education Association on Saturday in Orlando. And it was such a thrill. But I got to hear Dr. Jeff Redding, who is the Director of Music at West Orange High School. In two thousand nineteen, he was the Grammy Award-winning Music Teacher of the Year. You talk about inspirational and there is no doubt that he is student-centered in everything that he does. And he was a student who struggled all the way through school. But music helped him get through and he is absolutely tremendous. Dr. Grantham, I would love for him to come and speak with our teachers, our administrators. His message is very powerful, very powerful. So, I'll give you that information. But if you ever have the chance to hear Dr. Jeff Redding, absolutely marvelous, just marvelous. So, I wanted to share that because I would love to bring him to Marion County. Thank you.
Good. Okay, well, Nancy, I hope to bring you and the other board members good news. A couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with Chairman Stone from the County Commission. And it, us not having a really well, a good board meeting room was brought up. And I did pose the question if we could maybe rent or borrow their space. And they did get back with me and I have heard that there's this bug flying around. I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm just not doing that. This is flying around. But anyways, they, the, the County Commission is open, open to sharing their meeting room with us. And their auditorium seats, two hundred and thirty-five people. It's already equipped. It has, yeah, for the TVs, the monitors, everything's perfect, you know, what we can do. But we would have to change out the sign. What I would like to do is ask the board, first of all, if we have a consensus, if it's something we would be interested in, you know, for a while. And if we are, I would like to invite Kevin and Teresa to come with me and see if we can work out some details and then bring that back, you know, for a quick. So, is that, we have a consensus?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I think that'll be good, you know? Why build something new if we already have something sitting, you know, and they're open at this point? So...
And Ms. King, may I say I rest my case?
Thank you.
Well, and it's set up for that. It's set up for board meetings where MTI, I think, auditorium is a bigger venue, but there's probably logistical things that may be costly.
Thank you for looking into that. Great idea.
So, hopefully that's just...
And that's the great collaboration of, of the county agencies.
Yes.
Working together.
Yes, yeah. So, I'm looking forward to moving forward with that. And I'll bring back more information as we move forward. Okay, and then also I need to bring up the heat restrictions policy for the band members. I know last week we received an email from the superintendent stating that she would not be liable should, from her attorney saying if anything should happen. I think as a board, we probably need to move forward with the policy. So, if our band students and directors, they need to know what to do with July vastly approaching. So, do we, I can offer a solution maybe, and that's if we could maybe make a policy and then have some, you know, if there's a heat advisory, of course you wouldn't be out. And, you know, students, their parents sign waiver forms, you know, so that is to be looked at. Also, there could be some professional development for the teachers and the parents that are out there with the students. Maybe we could just put something together, you know, to, you know, for them. Or would, how do we want to move forward with this?
I don't really know if we're looking for a solution for a problem that we've invented. This has been a, and it takes time to form a policy, right?
I was gonna say, you, you don't have time to get it in place before July. Now, you'd be looking at the end of July, so the summer would be over.
You know, one problem with this district the last few years is just so many rules. And I don't understand why, do we don't have any existing policy of any kind that would cover anything like this?
Not, not specifically. I don't know what the purpose would be as far as what the board's prerogative was.
Like, what's been the policy for the football and all that, the practices and stuff?
There's not a, I'm not aware of a formal policy regarding heat.
I don't think there is a formal policy. I think more of what the high school athletic association has kind of mandated down because there were so many kids.
That's for the football mainly, yeah.
Still athletics. And I think they kind of consider band kind of falls up under as almost like an athletic.
But it's not. It's banned.
Yeah, but we received a whole write-up from the marching band information from the high school directors. And it says that they already have hydration and rest policies in, in place.
Right. Well, here's my concern. As we know, that's, if we say there is no policy, I think the directives that they're under right now is if they do, they're gonna be held liable with that. So, somehow we need to communicate to the band directors and the schools and the parents that they should be allowed to have band practice. I mean, I don't know how we want...
Well, and the schedules, I was pleased with the schedules that we received. And it looks like they have the hydration in there. So...
Well, first of all, if we're gonna be great, we can't hold people back. We can't make rules that, I mean, you know, I saw there was an attorney that was brought into it and about how blah, 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 blah. And that's what I thought the whole time I was reading that was blah, blah, blah. You know, they could have a heat stroke out there at five o'clock. It's hopefully hot at five. You could have a heat stroke in the morning. This is, children have heart attacks, which you don't even know they even had a heart condition, unfortunately. This is just nonsense. I'm sorry. My DNA's coming out, Ms. McCall. This is a complete nonsensical hogwash and overbearing more to explain why this community was ready for an appointed superintendent. I don't know, Mr. Gibbs, I mean, what can...
Rulemaking takes at a minimum forty-two days. That's if you had a policy ready to go today.
Can we make like a resolution? Or can we do a board resolution?
It wouldn't be policy. So, I mean, you, to pass a policy, you gotta go through rulemaking. That's at a minimum forty-two days, not counting development time. So, if it took you three weeks' worth of work sessions, you're still looking, you're looking at August. So, I mean, I think a long-term goal is like get one in place for next summer. Right now, it's...
I don't think we'll need one for next summer. We will have a sensible person running the show because this is not even making sense.
Well, I, I'm comfortable with the schedules that the high school band directors have thoughtfully put together.
Yes, they have. But as that's being said, they're probably still under the directives that, you know, should they take their students or whatever. I think they're probably caught between a rock and a hard stone is what...
Dr. Grantham?
Yeah, Ms. King, if you tell me what you want to do, I'll send an email what the board wants tomorrow and we'll follow your, your guide.
Well, I think the board trusts what they have provided with us.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with what the band directors have done. The only one that I questioned a little bit was Westport, but not even...
These kids carry water bottles. These band kids have big hats.
I, I was really, I was comfortable with...
We have Camp Kuanis. Camp Kuanis students are outside all day.
I was, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the schedules that our band directors have put together and provided. I, I thought it was comprehensive. I think they have taken the students' hydration very seriously.
Just can you me follow that, there you go?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Sure.
It's kind of like whatever happened to common sense, you know? And if there's a heat advisory, surely they're gonna bring the, the kids in. And, and we want to empower the people that are the closest to the, to the situation to be able to make those kinds of decisions. Now, board, on the flip side, we live in a very litigious society. And if some kid falls out, God forbid, or something bad happens, that's my only concern is just making sure we're protected. You can't legislate for everything, you know, nor do we want to. But I just want to put that out there.
We just can't hold it back. And the entire school system's music program because of some rule that's, every, other districts, I mean, this district's always had band practice out. I mean, these kids are walking all over town.
Ten AM is arbitrary. You know, what if you have a nice cloud cover and a good breeze?
That's, that's the thing. The, this schedule that they came up with was put in to get them out, to get them out in the cool of the morning and then get them out before the hottest part of the day. So...
And that, like I said, Westport was my concern. So, if you could, Dr. Grantham, maybe talk to, I believe it's Mr. Vance there, because he does have two fifteen to five o'clock group rehearsal outside. So, that, that is a, that's a very hot part of the day.
But you know what? If they, kids can do it. Well, I'm telling you, this has like become Snowflakeville. Our entire school system.
I mean, and there's several that are outside.
I don't even know how the parents stand it.
Well, here's my thoughts. There, she also provided a list. I mean, there are camps outside. So, I don't know how we pick and choose what and when we're gonna do it. And also, if you think of Camp Kuanis, those students are outside all day for a week. Swimming or whatever, they're outside. But they're making good choices. So, I, I agree. I don't think we need to be picking...
I mean, if the, if the, if the heat index is, you know, very, very high, we would suggest that they take them inside. I mean, you, and, but they've, they've gotta use common sense about that.
They've been doing that for, for, for football. I think there's a, with heat indexes, you know? Again, it's, it's, it's common sense.
Okay, we got it. All right. I think Dr. Grantham understands what we expect.
Yeah, periodic water breaks, common sense.
Also, I would like us to acknowledge our, do we have an Eagle Scout in the making back there? We have a Brock Ramey and he's Troop Seventy-Two from Ocala. And he's observing our meeting for a badge requirement in communications. So, we appreciate you coming today and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through May twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Mrs. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD nineteen dash one five one E and JD nineteen dash... May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD nineteen dash one five one E and JD nineteen dash one six five, JD nineteen dash one six six, JD nineteen dash one six seven E, JD nineteen dash one six eight E, and JD nineteen dash one six nine? With educational services through the remainder of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year and all of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the meeting is, or the motion passed five zero and the meeting is adjourned at six twenty.